Great, all right, so we're going to convene the meeting for this evening. I'm Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the City Council's Committee on Sustainability and Environment, and I'm joined by my colleagues on the council committee, Councilor Melvin Edwards from Ward 3 and Councilor Adam Gomez from Ward 1. And we have one agenda item before us today, which is a discussion and presentation by Eversource, which is our local gas utility that has recently, as many folks are aware, taken over control of the gas utility system from Columbia Gas, which was previously our provider, that was in a sale carried out under the Mass DPU. And as folks on the call are aware, myself, other councilors, and community members have been very engaged in past years with Columbia Gas around their leak repair program. Obviously, several years ago, we worked with Columbia Gas to bring an accelerated repair schedule of gas leaks to the city of Springfield, as well as an accelerated infrastructure upgrade in general of old and leaking pipes. And one of the things that was very important to myself and to fellow councilors as we make the transition over to Eversource is that we continue building on that professional relationship of accountability and communication around gas infrastructure, especially gas leaks, but also just in general. Usually, we had hosted an update with Columbia Gas about their efforts on leak repair, and so we wanted to continue that with Eversource. So I had a chance to meet with Eversource a few weeks ago to get an idea of where they were, and thankful to them for agreeing to present to the entire council on this issue. And we have with us, from Eversource, a number of folks, as well as some members of the community. So I'm going to introduce or recognize first Joe Mitchell. And Joe, if you want to just introduce yourself to the committee and other folks on the call, let us know about your role at Eversource and maybe introduce your team as well.
Great, thank you, Councilor Letterman. And can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
For some nods, I got some nods, terrific. I'm Joe Mitchell, I'm the Community Relations Specialist for Eversource Energy. I have 22 electric towns and six gas towns in Western Massachusetts and Springfield. I cover for both gas and electric. Thank you, Councilor Letterman, for allowing us to present before your committee on this evening. I've been before different committees for the Springfield City Council. Councilor Ramos invited myself and my team to present earlier this fall on a different subject matter. But with me this evening is Mark Gonzalez, who's the Director of Gas Operations Integration. Also with me is, part of our team is Craig Mello, who's our Director of Gas Maintenance. And my boss, Mike Beedelius, with us this evening, and he's the manager of Community Relations. And what we're hoping to do for this body is to update you on the efforts that Eversource has put into our gas infrastructure in the city of Springfield. So you can see the amount of effort we're putting in and the progress we're making.
Excellent, and we're also joined now on the call by Councilor Tracy Whitfield. Thank you, Councilor, for joining us. So Joe, I think probably what makes the most sense is, I know you guys have a presentation. I think probably what makes sense is to allow you to make that presentation, and then we'll entertain questions from the council. And I know we do have a few community members as well. We'll entertain some questions from them too, if they have them. So Joe, whoever I can give you guys, or I would ask Brandon if you could make sure that they have the ability to share their screen.
Do you want, so I think, Mark, you're going to make the presentation. Do you want me to share my screen? And you can call the slide changer, you want to do it?
I don't mind sharing, I've got it up and ready, if you want.
No, that works for me.
Great.
And sir, I'm sorry, just so I can jump in for a moment, so I can rename you in the system. What is your first and last name, sir?
It's Mark with a K, Gonzalez.
How is your last name spelled? Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I should be ready to share?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And Mark, I think if you go up to slideshow and then you just say view from the beginning.
There it is, thank you.
When the camera's on, it's so much tougher.
It is, okay, can everybody see that now?
Super, yep.
Great. So thank you for having us tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to get in here and present this. As Joe said, I'm Mark Gonzalez. I am the General Manager of Gas Operations. With me co-presenting tonight is going to be Craig Mello, who is in charge of maintenance and operations. And one of his responsibilities is in the Springfield Service Center. So tonight, we have a very brief presentation that we want to show you with our focus on leak repair in the city, and also too, a little insight to our GSEP program, which is our gas pipe replacement of priority pipe in the city. We'll give you a look ahead and what the plan is for that. So just to start out, a couple of points to mention to everybody. As Councilor Letterman said, we, Eversource assumed a responsibility for the company on October 9. Formerly, Columbia Gas was under moratorium on performing certain types of work. So we were really, our hands were tied in being able to do work, which put us behind in work plan, put us behind in some of our repair programs. But through some discussions with the Department of Public Utilities, that moratorium was lifted on October 20. So we're pleased to say we're back to normal operations with scheduling. Of course, we've got the other problem that we're all dealing with, the city and Eversource, with COVID-19. So there are, you know, some concerns, and so we're cautious with customer facing with the tier that we're in right now, and of course with COVID. You know, we follow the state's protocols very closely on that and work very closely with them. Just on the first slide, just to give you a sense of, and you've probably seen this before, of what we have for pipe in the city of Springfield. And for the next, you know, X amount of years, 10-plus years, it will be a big focus of ours is replacing priority pipe through the GSEP program. You can see right now, we're about 47% in the city with what we call state-of-the-art pipe, newer plastic pipe. We're about 43% cast iron, definitely a higher amount because of the city. The city is an older infrastructure from the gas manufacturing days. So that is, you know, an area that we're really focusing on very hard. As you know, the GSEP program started in 2014, where the department and utilities worked together to develop some regulation about replacing this priority pipe. And we'll show you a little bit about our plans with the GSEP program. There's a little bit of unprotected steel, very small amount, but that is also in the priority pipe program. Any steel that is unprotected by cathodic protection, we have a heavy interest to get out and put state-of-the-art pipe in. And there's about 8% protected steel. You can see the ages on the right, you know, and, you know, our, you know, what we're trying to do here is really, you know, up that age profile to newer pipe, right? So, you know, most of the pipe that we're looking at is, you know, in the categories, you know, of pre-1979. Give you a little sense of what we got going on for Class 2 leaks. When we met with Councilor Letterman back last month, one of the things we presented, and we've been working, you know, with your Department of Public Works very closely on getting permits for doing Class 2 leak repairs. Craig and his team have worked incredibly hard. We've met with the city on a couple of occasions to coordinate. That is really one of the things that Craig and I and the rest of the team want to do, is really coordinate well on the work we do. You know, we do have some backlogs in the city because of the moratorium that Columbia Gas was under. But really, we are working very hard this year, but also as we get into next season to clean those backlogs up. Our real goal is to go into the winter months with a very low amount of leaks. So that, and the reason for that is, we really want to focus on getting Class 2s now, so that in January, when there's frost in the ground, the Class 2s don't turn into Class 1s, and we have to repair them in very adverse conditions. As you can see, you know, Craig and his team, incredible job. Mike Crosher, the Operations Manager over there. I think, Councilor, when we reported to you, we were at about 76, I believe the number was. And, you know, we're down to 19 as of this morning in the city. So I'm going to, Craig, why don't you, do you want to talk a little bit about what's going on and what your plans are for next year?
Thank you, Mark. Can everybody hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So our plan is, we're going to continue to, our focus is going to be on all the leakage in the pipe for the maintenance group. We want, we want to go into the winter months, and we want to keep a very low backlog of leaks throughout the whole year. So I've come from a world, been in the industry 31 years, come from a world. The area I ran was the New Bedford District down by Cape Cod. And when I took over that district in 2005, we'd go into the winter months with over 100 Class 2 leaks. And it was never a good scenario, because we had a lot of backlog of leaks. Currently, in the New Bedford District, they're sitting on like two leaks right now, which is, it's an incredible feat that they've, we've accomplished down there. So that's the mindset that I have from a maintenance standpoint when it comes to leakage. No leak is the best leak. We don't want leaks on our system. There are always going to be some with cross conditions and people digging around our pipes, causing damage and stuff like that. So we're always surveying our pipes, we're making sure that we run a safe operation. And my focus is going to be on all the leaks and all the mandated maintenance work, to ensure that the city of Springfield is safe, as just it is, and all the other Eversource territories. And we're going to keep pushing forward that. So again, we did work with the cities and towns and everything, and we do work all winter long, and we want to stay on top of these, these Class 2 leaks. Because we're going to keep surveying these pipes all winter long, and, you know, leaks are going to pop up, and I want to address them as soon as possible and get them off the books. So that's the plan for now, Mark, and that's the focus of the area manager. And that is the direction that I've given them, and we are going to continue on this path. So my goal is zero, and maintain zero if I can, I'll try. But I want to be as close to zero as possible.
You know, another really important point to this slide is, and we've already started, Craig and I have met with Chris Signoli and Joe and Mike out at the city. And we have a very strong commitment to make sure that we follow through on our paving commitments, that our restoration is to expectation. So we've had some discussions on that, and we are going to work very, very hard to follow through on that commitment. And, you know, it really is, we want to continue to develop a relationship that the city trusts us to be able to go out and do work, stay with these Class 3 leaks, or Class 2 leaks rather, and get them cleaned up. Just one other point before I leave this slide. There are 218 Class 3 leaks in the city. Last time, Councilor Letterman, when we met, we were at 235. So even though that's not our focus, our focus is really on the Class 2s. Those are coming down, and, you know, we still pay attention to our Class 3s also. Want to shift over on this slide to our gas system enhancement program, which is our pipe replacement program. So as you can see here, back in 2017, this is replacing our cast iron piping and our unprotected steel. So what we do is, we have a priority ranking system internally. So we look at all the piping in our system, not only in Springfield, but obviously throughout the territory. And we really do a lot of analysis on which pipe are potentially causing leaks. We look at age, we look at material, we look at all of those factors, and we want to pick the best ones to go after. And, you know, a big part of that is, we want to pick up pipe here that gets rid of leak, leak-prone pipe. So if you look in 17, we did about 36,000 feet in the city. In 18, we went to about 16,000 feet. In 1922, and you can see the impact that a lot of, a lot of that Columbia Gas, a lot of the resources were shifted up to the Merrimack Valley during that time. And then in 2020, you can see there was a significant drop in pipe replacement, largely due to what we already talked about, the moratorium, and also COVID-19. So our plan is to get, is to get back on track. We did complete some projects in the city. You can see on the right here, at the end of the year. One of the large ones that we talked about with Chris Signoli, that we need to get to and clean up early next year, is in the area of Allen Street, Crown and Palm. There's a large pipe replacement project going on there that needs to be cleaned up. Due to the moratorium, due to the weather that came in, we need to postpone that until, until spring, and then we'll clean that up. That's going to be part of Craig and I's commitment to take a look at all the backlog work that Columbia Gas had, and come up with a plan to get that cleaned up next year so that we can go into the fall without having projects on the books. On this slide, just to give you a little look at the gas system enhancement program going forward, you can see that we want to ramp up. Now, I will say that these are, these are estimates. And one of the things that's really important for us to do is to work with the city and really get some good coordination going on what roads are up to be paved, because we want to stay ahead of that, right? So if there's one that maybe doesn't rank quite as high for us, but they're going to pave it, we want to jump on that one first, so that we can get in there, replace the pipe that's going to come up. So we've already engaged with the Department of Public Works, and we'll work that paving plan and, you know, get our GSEP plan coordinated like that. But you can see, we are ramping up in Springfield. You know, you show here through 2025 quite a bit, and this is in feet of pipe. And again, this is replacing cast iron, unprotected steel, and replacing with state-of-the-art pipe. The last slide that I want to, I want to share with you, and the other slides I showed you were Springfield only, this one is broken out by the Springfield Service Center. So this would be the surrounding towns also. And what this does is, this shows you what we plan to replace for different types of piping. So we've got cast iron here, bare steel shown here. And we show you each year through 2030, how much of that we intend to replace. So if you take it out to 2030, when we met with Councilor Letterman, this completes the GSEP program and gets all of the cast iron pipe replaced if we stay on this program through 2030. A little note, you can see on the right, that I will say, even though this is a pictorial of the entire surrounding cities and Springfield, about 52% of the pipe in the Springfield Service Center is in the city. And again, that's largely due to, there's a lot of cast iron from the old gas manufacturing days, because it is an old infrastructure in the city. Not unlike Worcester, New Bedford, very similar type profiles over there. Craig, do you want to add anything on, on the program here?
Yes, so what we, as Mark stated earlier, we are going to be working, the area manager, myself, and with the cities, with the DPW, we're going to get their list of all the streets that they are going to restructure this year. And we want to get in there prior to them, so that when, when the roadway is paved, we're not digging a brand-new roadway. We've, we've adopted that plan years and years ago, up at the Eversource world. As an area manager and as a director at Eversource, we, we put that at the front of the list, because nobody, it's the worst optical vision you can get, is the city paves the road, and then there's somebody in there two weeks later digging it up. It always, it always frosted my fanny, and I, I do everything in my power to make sure that doesn't happen. So we are going to work very closely with the city and make sure that we are replacing these pipes. And then we are going to target all this leak-prone pipe. So the area managers and the local knowledge of the area of where we might have some issues, those are the pipes that we want to go after first, to reduce our footprint of leakage. So like I said, we've been very successful in the world that we've lived in, and I anticipate we'll be very successful over here following that same blueprint.
Yeah, I would say Craig and I have been working together for 35 years. We've done this a lot. You know, Craig's been all the way from on cruise to supervision. I've been a paving supervisor in the past at the company. You know, we have a lot of background working with towns and cities, you know, and we know that, you know, our word and our commitment to the city is critical. And, you know, I can tell you with Craig and I that that goes a long way. It's very, very important for us to, you know, have a good reputation, and our reputation is everything. So that is, that is our plan, and we're strongly committed to the city to work, work with them.
Well, thank you both, everybody involved in the presentation. Does that conclude the presentation, Mark?
It does.
All right, if you want to pull the screen down, that way we can get, be able to see everybody again, and we'll move into questions. I'll just begin, and then I'll take questions from, if any councilors have any additional questions. And then also, we'll allow members of the public or media who might be here to ask any questions. But I do appreciate you guys bringing in the presentation, giving folks an update on the strategy. I'm very glad to hear, really, the sort of upfront goal is zero. I think that's really important. And I'm glad to hear that even since we met last month, you've been able to tackle down a number of leaks, especially in the Grade 2 and also in the Grade 3 area. When we started this work, and I just see Marty Nathan from North Hampton just joined, we started working with Columbia Gas in 2017. There were 566 leaks in the city of Springfield between Grade 2 and 3s. And that was really alarming to all of us. So being able to see that continue to come down, I think when we met with Columbia Gas last year, they were at 366, and now it sounds like it's come down from farther, looking at about, if I'm doing my math correctly with what you guys presented, about 237 on the books right now. Is that accurate?
Yes, yep. I believe, I got to look back at the Class 3 on the presentation. It might have been 235 and 19.
Okay. So, so yeah, so we're moving down steadily, and I think that the amount of pipe replacement of the leak-prone pipe in general that we're seeing is also in line with that goal, as well as the elimination of the super emitters. You know, one of the big things that we learned at the, you know, time when we started looking into this was that a lot of the lost gas, which is significant from the environmental standpoint, was really only coming from a few different areas. And so, so I think we're headed down the right path, and that's why we just want to continue, you know, this relationship of communication and accountability. So I think at this time, if there are any questions from councilors, if you want to raise your hand, or members of the public, feel free to raise your hand in the queue, and we'll be able to call on you, recognize you in that regard, and take any additional questions for the folks from Eversource. So we have, Councilor Gomez?
Thank you, Chairman Letterman. Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you, sir. My question is not relative to the presentation, relative to, I know that there was, there's been conversation on an expansion coming from Long Meadow and towards 6 across at the Forest Park. And I know you guys have taken over the helm. And just relative to those questions, are you guys prepared to be able to talk a little bit about that? I know that we had meetings last year specific to, I know in Holyoke, there was a stop of a gas pipeline that was supposed to come from up north. Then I know that, you know, some of our guests, there was a, you know, conversation, there was a substation or something that was being built on the border of Springfield and also Long Meadow, if I'm right, that was coming up into this direction. I'm not going to dive too deep in it at the moment, but can you guys speak a little bit to that? And where are you guys at with, with, and in regards to, you know, expanding that expansion?
Yep.
And I'll take that, Councilor.
Go ahead, Joe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, super. Yeah, Councilor Gomez, thank you for the question, I appreciate the inquiry. So Eversource, we're still looking at all options, and we do know that project is out there. But unfortunately, we're not ready to speak on that tonight. You know, at the request of Councilor Letterman, you know, weeks ago, we presented him, you know, our leak program and what we're doing to attack it. And he wanted to bring this forward to his subcommittee, but I'm sorry, but we're not ready to talk about the other piece. And by the way, it's, it has been misnamed as an expansion project. The way I understand it is, it's a reliability project, it's to bring, you know, increased reliability to the region. But I'm sorry, we're not ready to talk about that tonight.
All right, no problem, I appreciate your answer. And I'll inquire and reach out to you guys at a further time and date. So I respect that, and I understand. It's just, you know, a lot of my constituency still on the liability project, still had questions, and a lot of groups were in communication with me. And I know that with the transition of power from Columbia Gas to Eversource, it's still kind of in the conversation, even though it hasn't been talked about. So I just wanted to, to see if, you know, when you guys would be prepared to have that conversation, just reach out to Councilor Letterman, so we can have a subcommittee on it. But moving forward, I'll reach out behind myself and reach out to you guys to build that relationship. Thank you so much for your answer.
Super, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gomez, and I also appreciate Councilor Gomez's question. I'd share with the, with the committee and folks on the call, and Eversource is aware of this as well. It is something I've inquired with them about, and do plan to host a subcommittee meeting in the new year. We'll have to see if I'm fortunate enough to continue to chair the Committee on Sustainability and Environment. Of course, we always sort of reshuffle things every year. So depending on committee assignments, either way, we will be pushing for a committee meeting in the new year on that, and have had some initial conversations with Eversource as well. Did want to bring forward the leak update, as that's a longstanding project that the council and community have been working on. But certainly recognize that we are receiving a lot of questions about that project. We did hold a hearing on it with Columbia Gas last year, and looking forward to holding another hearing on it with Eversource in the very near future. So I have two other hands up for members of the public. I have Kathy Kay, followed by Marty Nathan. Kathy, go ahead to unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm wondering if the Con Ed line replacement, which is described as replacing 8,500 feet of crumbling cast iron to reduce risks from leakage, will be done under the GSEP program?
So I can, I can just touch on that. I'm not prepared to talk about the details of that project tonight, and I could come back and do that. But the Con Ed line is a steel line, and there is a project on the books to replace that. So I could be more prepared for details if we want to come back and talk about it. But that is a steel line.
Okay, thank you.
And Marty, Dr. Nathan?
There. I, this is my fault, I came in late to the conversation, and I only saw the last slide. And I, my understanding was that the discussion tonight was about leaks and fixing leaks. I'm sorry if I'm forcing you to repeat yourself, but is your process of leak reduction, is it identifying super emitters, or is it replacing pipe?
Yeah, so the, thank you for the question. The, the program that we presented tonight was purely about fixing Class 2 leaks and Class 3 high emitters. And as we showed tonight, we started on October 9 with 126 in the city. And as of this morning, we're down to 19 Class 2 leaks. I think it was 235 Class 3s and no Class 3 emitters.
I'm sorry, no Class 3 super emitters?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, well, that's very good. And how, what are you using to identify the super emitters?
Craig, do you, do you have comment on that process?
Yes, I can help you with that, Mark. So we're following the state standard and the state DPU order of a 2,000-foot footprint. So you, what they do is, when they, when they- So you, what they do is when they, when they measure leakage, they measure footage within length. And if it equates to more than 2,000 feet, that is called a high emitter. And we have to fix them within a year. So.
Okay, great.
We're following.
I'm sorry, yeah. So you're talking about ground diameter?
Ground, the plume. I'll call it plume or the spread of the leak. So if a leak is 100 feet by 20 feet wide, if they're getting readings for like 100 foot in length and it's like 20 feet wide, that equates to 2,000 square foot ruling by the DPU and that's what we follow. And that leak gets put right to the front of the line for us to repair.
Gotcha. That's really wonderful. Are you, in the second half of that question, are you just fixing the leak or are you replacing the pipe?
So it depends on where that's falling on the category of the GSEP program. So if that high emitter is already on the pipe, on the, in the pipeline for that main to be replaced, that gets replaced with the pipe. If that, if it's a year or two out, the pipe is going to be replaced, we'll make the repair. We're not replacing that pipe. We'll make the repair, we'll stop the leak. And then when we come through with the relay pipe, maybe in a year or two down the road, maybe three years, that, all of the leaks that are associated with that segment of pipe will be replaced, will be repaired also at this time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you for the question.
Thank you very much, Dr. Nathan. And Mark, I just looked back in your presentation, at least according to the presentation, you had written that there were 218 Class III leaks currently and then 19 Class II.
That is correct.
I think that puts us at about 237 total. So are there any further questions for our team from Eversource, from the council or from any members of the public? Seeing none, just make a couple of closing comments. And I think, Dr. Nathan, I really appreciated your questions. And it's worth noting, I mean, when, when we started this work with the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition a few years ago, you know, Springfield was really one of the first places where we started to see the addressing of Grade III super emitters. And so to see that we have zero super emitters now is really great news. And we just want to keep that, keep that going. At our last hearing, we did an analysis with HEAT, the Home Energy Efficiency Team, which is a statewide watchdog on gas infrastructure in the Commonwealth. And one of the things that we found out was that since, you know, pushing for these changes, Springfield had the least leaks per mile of the largest cities in Massachusetts, Boston, Worcester and Springfield. So we want to keep it that way. The numbers as they're coming in, since you guys have taken over, are looking good. And we just want to see us, as Mr. Mello said, get down to zero. So we're going to continue to work together with this, this group from Eversource. And we hope you'll continue to be able to work together with our DPW. It sounds like you're following a lot of the best practices in terms of being able to get in there when we have the streets open. And so we just want to see that continue and looking forward to continuing the conversation in the new year around other community concerns as well. Is there anything that Joe or Mike or anybody would like to share in closing before we adjourn?
I would just, again, appreciate the chance to come and speak in front of this group and answer the questions that come before us. And we've had a good working relationship, obviously, on the electrical side for many years. And we're proud to now have the gas side under the, under the Eversource umbrella. So thank you. Look forward to continuing our work with Chris Signoli and the DPW and we'll be back in the future.
All right. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you to the members of the community and public that joined us here. We wish you and your crews the best of luck with the upcoming snowstorm. Say, stay safe and warm and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the committee.
Motion made to adjourn.
Is there a second? I think we lost our other councilors, Counselor Edwards. So I think we're adjourned by default. So we're adjourned. I banged the gavel, but I'm at my house and I don't have one here. So.
Might scare the dogs.
How much? Have a great evening.